Why don't we call the meeting to order? It is six thirty-four, so why don't we get started? Thanks for everybody who's joining, whether you're online or here in person. We'll start off with public input, any public input, online or here. Feel free. Why don't we, yeah, why don't you go over the mic?
Thanks. I promise I won't talk every week.
You are more than welcome to.
Careful. I just wanted to mention that the North Reading-
Name and address.
Sorry, right. Mira Reynolds for Berdich Way. And I'm Chair of the Special Ed Parent Advisory Council, and we just wanted to let everybody know, whoever's streaming or in the NORCAM verse, and all of you certainly. We're starting to have our leadership meetings public open. They're going to be the second Tuesday of every month. The website, from seven to eight PM, the website link will be on our website and on our Facebook page, so if anybody's curious about who we are, what we do, please log on, and any questions can go to northreadingcpac@gmail.com.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I can't see online, but I'm assuming there's nothing there. Alright. Next up, the student report, Ms. Saldana.
Hi, so just to go, just introduce myself. I'm Sophia Saldana, and I am a senior here at North Reading High School. So, school started on Thursday of last week, but began for faculty and staff on Tuesday for professional development. Some notable fine arts matters, Maskers is hosting their auditions for Water for Elephants starting tomorrow and Wednesday. For athletics, we do have our first football game on Friday at Greater Laurel Tech. And then just all fall sports have started, so that would be, boys right now have won a game, girls soccer has won a game and tied a game, golf has lost three games, or matches, I'm not sure what you call them.
How good.
Volleyball has won two games, and they're playing one right now, and field hockey has won a game and lost a game. We did also have picture day today, that's for all students and also all faculty. We did have the freshman orientation last week on the twenty-seventh, or on the week before. For, that was the slam orientation, and we'll have our first mentoring session this Thursday. Homecoming ticket sales opened today, and then just like a general, we do have some new like bathroom and phone policies as well, as we begin the year. And then for my student work, I haven't really done anything.
It's a little early.
Yeah, but I do have, this was a case, study analysis paper that I did for AP Psych that I worked on over the summer.
That could be a recipe for like anything, this range.
It was for a book called An Unquiet Mind, and she just gave us kind of some points we needed to hit, and it had to be just between five or seven pages roughly. And that, we just turned that in as soon as the first class started.
Wonderful. So, what other interests have you got, other than hanging out with us on a Monday night?
I do a lot of student council stuff. I'm the Student Council Vice President this year. And I just like, I kind of like student government, stuff like that. I'm really interested in kind of like civics and politics, so I feel like most of what I do is kind of around that.
Good for you, that's great.
Thank you.
Dare we ask what your future steps will be, or is it too early to even think about that? You can say no, you can say like, "No."
Right now, I'm thinking law school, but maybe I'll change my mind in the future.
We can tell you to turn back. Wonderful.
So, where, does the Student Council put homecoming on? Last year was a big success, right? Because that was the first time they moved outside of North Reading, right? Where is it this year, and are you planning the same numbers, you think?
It's gonna be at the same location as last year, and we are hoping for the same numbers. We did just have an interest form go out, and I don't have it with me, but I know at least like over two hundred, two hundred something students responded, and only three people said they wouldn't go.
Great.
Where was it last year?
At Oleo in Peabody.
The key thing was not at the school. Have a great year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Well, you're more than welcome to stay if you wish, or if you want to take off and do something maybe a little more interesting. Welcome to do that, too.
The girls volleyball match looks exciting down there. When I walked by, there was a lot going on, so.
Hey, there is.
Mr. Friedman, just want to thank you for going first, and for coming together. We just started school on Thursday, brought the group together today. We set up our schedule for the year, but she was willing to come in here and do the first one with us. Really took the lead today, so much appreciated, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. And we'll give a legal quiz every time you're here. That was his idea. Excellent, yeah, thank you for joining. Okay, next up, continued business, doesn't look like we have any at this time, correct me if I'm wrong. And then for new business, we're going to get a school opening update from Dr. Daly and Mr. Connolly.
Just one question on the continued business. I wasn't sure, what did we want to do for next steps with the twenty-twenty, yeah, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school committee goals? Does the, do you want us to bring that on in our next meeting as continued business and kind of review them? Do we want to set up another workshop?
I mean, if we can do a quick workshop, I would say let's finalize them, and then see if we can finalize it for next week, if everybody else is amenable to that. Or next meeting, not next week, but I'd like to get it started, if we can.
I don't know if we need a workshop, I thought we were pretty much-
You think we're finalized?
Yeah, because to do a workshop, to then go and repeat all of it again, I think we could probably almost do the workshop in the meeting.
Oh, that's fine.
You know, and just kind of-
That's fine.
Kind of finalize it there, and then-
I'm totally fine with it. So long as the end goal is, let's get it started by the next meeting, I'm totally fine with it.
Yeah. Timing, I agree with, I just don't know if we need to, because like, I don't think we were opposed on anything. It was just clearing up language.
That's fine with me.
Maybe we just go through it right there, and-
I'll introduce that for the next, the next twenty-
Yep.
Thank you.
No, no, all good.
So, school opening update. You know, everything, we started our school year this year with a professional development day for all staff on the second. We had two presenters, we had a former Commissioner of Education actually was here, speaking about AI in his new capacity, works with MIT, and a program there. And then we also had sort of a motivational speaker, a former educator, to come out and just talk about, frame the year as best school year ever. So, it was sort of a motivational, inspirational charge. It did not go unnoticed, that he got up on stage and he says, he starts speaking multiple language, and he's like, "Where are my French teachers at?"
I heard about this.
I heard about this.
So, yeah, that was, that was something that I phoned the next day and talked about. But it was great, Mr. Kline did a wonderful job setting up the entire day, multiple signups. A lot of our educators offered professional development for each other, and we had, we had a lot of great sessions that day, as well as some outside experts coming in. Next day was our welcome back day in the morning, Mr. Friedman gave an address to the group. We gave our opening day, we got our teachers back to the schools, staff back to the schools, and they were able to have their meetings in each building. So, two new principals, lots of good feedback so far on everything that I'm hearing from staff about, about some changes that are happening across the district. And I'll hand over to Michael maybe for some updates on some of the logistical parts of reopening, busing and lunches and whatnot.
Yeah, so operationally, I think we're off to a smooth start of the year. We have, I think the buses, besides maybe one, one issue on one bus the first day, I think all some of the kinks were worked out, and they're running really on schedule, and getting the students, you know, the timeliness and the efficiency is, is happening at each level, at each, all twelve buses. I know I have been getting some questions from some parents about looking for the Bus Right invite link, so that's been a little, there's been a few little issues that we're working out there, but we know we're getting, those parents that haven't gotten it, we're finding out who those are and getting, getting those invites out so they can follow, follow the bus via Bus Right.
I was one of those parents.
You are, okay.
I'd say as soon as I emailed, it was like a minute later.
Yeah, so we, we thought it went out universally, and then we're finding that the-
Yeah, she was very, very on top of it.
Okay, that's good to hear. So, so that's happening, but I think, you know, by the second day of school, eight, you know, all the buses were, I know at the middle school and the high school, about eight eighteen, eight nineteen, ten minutes to spare, which is what we wanted. So, I think from a transportation standpoint, we're, we're good operationally.
Mr. Connolly, on the buses, real quick, if you don't mind, two, two things. Number one, when the bridges, when the bridge opens up, will that, do times have to be adjusted then?
I mean, I don't think it would have to be a significant adjustment there. I know we are having students walk further to a certain stop, so it might make things a little more efficient.
I'm just saying, because I don't mind they have to go all the way down to Kitty's and turn around.
Right.
I think they added time to that, so.
Yeah, we might, I mean, it might just mean they could start a little bit later in the day, leave the park a little bit later when that happens. So, we're still hoping that's about mid-October from what I'm hearing.
And then, and then what's the situation of bus passes?
Yeah, so on that data, is, we have sold a lot of bus passes. We're right at kind of where we've been over the last few years, so we do not see, from our terms of a participation standpoint, a registration standpoint, despite the increase over the last couple of years, any significant demand drop off. So, we have one thousand two hundred and fifty students with a bus pass riding the bus. Last year, we were a little bit less than that, about twelve twenty-five, and then the year before that, we might have led one thousand two hundred and eighty. So, we're right, we're right sort of where we've been. We currently, as of three o'clock today, have nine students at the middle school and the high school on the waitlist. I will say, I was prepared to present these numbers two weeks ago, and we only had one student on the waitlist at that time, so that waitlist grew to about seventeen students, and then we were able to move things around and accommodate about seven or eight of those students, but we're still at, we're at nine right now. And that's, that's kind of where we've been. We've kind of been between six and ten students the last three years.
Have you had any pushback on the fees, or not?
No, none.
And the waitlist students, right, they registered after the deadline?
Yeah, there was all, those were all students that registered in the last two weeks, since the last meeting.
Anything with the late bus? Did everybody get-
So, yeah, it's the other note.
Sorry.
You already did it anyway, sorry.
We are going to post the registration link for the late bus, probably by Wednesday, maybe Thursday, through Auburn, our similar registration to middle school and high school students. I've talked to Ms. O'Connell and at the high school as well, we're going to probably start that October sixth, the late bus will start, on or about that day. So, we'll probably have an open registration period between the tenth and the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth of September. And then, that will be a hundred dollar fee, as we talked, discussed.
Did we, did we end up with a hundred dollar fee, or did we drop that?
No, it was on, I didn't know.
A hundred dollar fee. No, I think it's still there.
Yeah, and we expanded it to high school.
Correct, it'll be open to everyone. And you don't have to have a bus pass, that's the difference.
That's what, that's what we did as a separate thing, right, yeah.
Okay, so it'll be a separate registration link, but everyone felt, let's get the school year started, let's wait for the first week, get things up and running. Typically, it does not start till October anyway, with extracurriculars and everything kicking, kicking off, so. So, that will, families will see that link this week.
When will the bus start?
Probably around October sixth, what we talked about.
Okay, and if we don't get registrations because of the fee, just make sure we know.
Then we, we just will not run, we wouldn't either run one bus, or not need to run both buses.
But just let us know, because if, if that's a barrier for any reason, it'd be good to know.
Okay. I think what we might see, I don't know, I mean, in the past, it was just going out to those students with the pass at the middle school, and it was sort of a Google form registration, it was, it would fill almost instantly. We'd have, we'd have over a hundred students that would want a pass, but we didn't see that ridership every day, so I think it was just sort of the people who wanted, it was sort of a nice convenience, but now that you have to pay, and it's open to everyone, we'll just, we'll see what happens. So, that's busing. From a food service standpoint, my, everything is kind of up, is running smoothly. And we, we sent some information in the transcript with the opening week about some updates that we did to some of the equipment, and refrigeration, and the ovens and so forth. So, we made some, some upgrades where we needed, and made some repairs. The menus are there posted, and the participation looks strong. Haven't gotten any reports, I haven't had a chance to get out to a lot of lunch, lunch sessions, but haven't gotten any reports that the students are waiting in line too long, or anything like I've had in the past, so. My understanding is it's, it's, everything's, you know, functioning and operationally working well. Universal breakfast program is there and available to all students at every level. So, I know we're trying to get students in the building a little bit earlier, and there's different lunch points for students to, to grab a breakfast. So, we'll watch those numbers, but I think from a food service standpoint, things are, things are functioning well.
Awesome.
Couple of quick questions, and one for Dr. Daly, too. On the food service, the high school, middle school went down from three lunches to two lunches, is that correct?
Yes.
Was there any big issue with that, or is it just with the numbers, it works fine?
Yeah, I think it was a lot of preference by the principal, and with, given the numbers, that probably they could make it work. I haven't, we haven't seen an issue with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether that stayed at both levels, I think they might have had to go back to the three, I'm not sure.
I think, I think middle school was three still by grade.
Yes.
They go by grade, and, and high school is just ninth and tenth together, and eleventh and twelfth together? Did you know about that? Did you, since we did the contract last year, I mean, do you have enough floaters, people that are willing to float to other schools?
Yeah, middle school still has three, and high school has two.
Right.
Looking at it, looking at the times now. Yeah, we have enough, we have enough floaters, every position's been filled, we have subs, we have floaters. I think there's a lead position that we're still trying to get situated at the Hood Elementary School, but we haven't seen that, yeah, there's been floaters.
And just in terms of the first couple of days at the middle school, because of the cuts to the foreign language, I'm just, and, and the computer science program, I'm just curious if you can comment quickly, Dr. Daly, on like how that schedule's working, and how it started off, I guess.
Sure. No issues due to that, I mean, there was a shift, there's been, you know, a lot of work, I will say, to a lot of people, especially Dr. O'Connell and Ms. Oliveto, trying to make the best of a difficult situation, right? And to embrace some of the positives of a schedule change, some things that we've wanted to do for a long time, with the necessity and the way that it had to happen, with some of the cuts that had to happen. So, I think they've done a really nice job working with their, with their staff to talk about that flex, the extension block that they've created, and how that's going to be used, and how that's going to help us meet some of our, our goals with working with students with interventions and whatnot. So, all of that is a positive, I think there's definitely, you know, there's obviously a loss with the staffing and with the, with the others. I will say, too, the staff that were here, I mean, obviously some staff lost their positions, other staff had to move to different buildings, different assignments. We had staff that had been at the middle school for their entire career, twenty years here, having to start, and they, you know, I applauded them, positive, great attitude, coming in the first day saying, "It's my first day of high school," like, so. I think, you know, as difficult as it was, I think we have great resilient staff who've really embraced the change. And we're going to continue to investigate what needs to, you know, be advocated for in terms of, you know, bringing things back, and also to talk about what we need to move forward. At the middle school, high school, we also implemented a change in the parking lot, I'm not sure if any of you-
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that was delightful coming in today.
We did do that, that's really, it's driven by safety issues. There were issues where students and staff were reporting that people were sort of zipping by them. So, really, the, what that does is it just reinforces the traffic pattern that's always been there. As anticipated, the first day of school, there's delays, I mean, people are getting out of their cars and taking photos, and but really, both, both before and after school have, have moved very quickly. The North Reading Police, as always, are here the first few days to help reinforce the traffic patterns. By day two, we were, the morning was, was much, much better, and the afternoon was cleared out by three fifteen or so, all the inner circle has still taken time to get down the hill, which, which is always a part of it. But essentially, by three twenty, three twenty-two, everyone's kind of cleared out, so. It's pretty good to get a thousand students and another three, four hundred, you know, staff members all out at the same time, so.
I appreciate that the sign clarifies, it applies to Mr. Sutherland as well.
Yeah, it's there. You have a really big truck to go through those barricades, so.
I just want to say, you know, for anybody who might be listening out there, the level of effort it takes to get first day and first week to run smooth is a tribute to a lot of hard work behind the scenes. I mean, it's, most years, in fact, you'd expect a little bit of something, of like, oh, six or seven buses, a little bit late, fine. This year went, it seems like it went especially smooth. So, really appreciate your efforts, as well as the efforts of everybody who made that happen, so thank you very much. And, you know, I know all the students and parents deeply appreciate it, too, so. It doesn't go unnoticed, so, thank you.
Sort of all hands, we're all outside in the mornings checking the buses, and, you know, Michael and I would look at each other and say, "It's pretty good," it's like, you know, one or two, you know, a couple of, you know, missed stops or changes, you know, things that happen. With, with any change, there's always going to be some questions, but I agree, it was very, you know, knock on wood, it's been a good, we haven't had a full five days yet, but it's been very good so far.
I think if you read between the lines, he's trying to say it's the leadership of the school committee change that really made the change just there, so.
What's the difference?
Actually, he's right, that's exactly what I meant.
Do you, do you know the timeline of the sewer project and when they're crossing? And I guess the reason why I ask is, I caught, you know, God at school started last week, but the Monday when kindergarten comes in, that's the real first day of school. And I, I do wonder if it's worth talking to the town about having them control traffic at the intersection of Avril and Park, because in all four directions, traffic was backed up at least a half a mile with that, with the sewer project ongoing. And what's happening is they're stopping traffic, and then the light was turning red at the wrong cycles, and it was, it just got backed up some, pretty bad. I would suspect it'll be like that until the sewer project at least stops crossing over Park Street.
Yeah, we have about two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks.
We're sort of in constant communication, police chief, we, town administrator, myself, Department of Public Works, town engineers. I was a little nervous, I'll be honest with you, on Tuesday or Wednesday of last week, when the batch elder had three or four vehicles parked in the parking lot, and, you know, so we, we just said, "Hey, that's not going to be there Thursday, right?" And they said, "No," so. They're working around it, they're also scheduling things during the day when they can, so essentially, when we're in school, that is a good time to come out, do a little work, make sure you're out of there well before dismissal. So, they've been making those adjustments and working with us, and that's cool. But right now, it looks like to be, there's some pieces this week, some more pieces next week, and that should wrap this phase of the project.
Maybe for that, I mean, it may be worth the, the police considering for that thirty or forty-five minutes, when the both schools are actively, that they, they consider manually directing traffic at that intersection, because it was basically at all stop, which is obviously contributing, you know, thankfully, it's not impacting the buses, it would appear, they managed to get in. But you could, you could see traffic, I mean, traffic was backed up all the way back to Central Street on one side, all the way back to Christopher's on the other, so it's going to be a-
Yeah, it does. I've noticed that, and I've heard that from staff, so.
And what about the field at the batch? Will that be wrapped up in two or three weeks, too, or no?
I, I'm fairly sure that that's all done now, but as far as usage of it, it's not being used for the- So, we're, they're reseeding, they're reseeding that and moving everything, that's why recess is over in the outfield, that's why haunted playground's going to be over there, because now, they're going to be reseeding, filling that in, and then it'll be ready for the spring.
I will say, my daughter was disappointed that the massive toys that she saw on the, on the playground with the batch were not available to kids, I was like, "No, those are adults."
Trucks.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I can't play on those? Excellent, thank you, thank you for the update. Anything else with school opening?
I don't believe so.
Awesome, excellent. Alright, so the next order of business is to review the town meeting articles. Specifically, warrant article thirteen is on the agenda. Do we want to take a look at it? Not sure if it's presenting.
Sure, so, I can share essentially what we're talking about here. You know, as you know, we're in the process, we've been speaking for many years through the Capitol request about the need to replace the module units at both the Hood and the Little School. They're both well beyond their useful life. Those have been, they obviously exceed the local Capitol, and would need to be at a different level. We are, you know, after talking about modular replacements, at the floor of one of our meetings, I believe it was during a Capitol presentation, it was suggested by our facilities director to explore permanent structure at the Hood School. We did a feasibility study there two years ago, Michael?
Yeah.
I believe.
Yep.
Came to the conclusion that there are some options, we can replace the little modulators, the Hood modulators, or we could replace and remove the little modulators and replace at the Hood with a permanent structure. And so, we did a statement of interest with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The next step in that process is for them to come out and do what's called a senior study. They're coming on September twenty-sixth, and they're basically going to look over what we had included in our statement of interest, and, and sort of hear from all of us, look at the pictures, and compare the pictures to what they're seeing firsthand. So, from there, if they then believe that we have a project that's worth pursuing, they would then invite us to, to submit. And from there, we would, we would then understand better what the cost would be, and what they would be able to offer to defray the cost. And at the end of the day, we'd still be looking at, is this something that we want to do a permanent structure, or do we want to just do a modular replacement? And what are the cost differentials between those options? So, you know, it was suggested by, by members of the Capitol planning to put this on the warrant. We're not going to have the information here to make it, so this is something that would be passed over in terms of any kind of a cost, but it's more of an informational item, and so we would provide a, a brief presentation. So, the thought would be similar to what we've shared in the past with some updates, but, you know, in our Capitol plan, you know, just some areas of the different modules, maybe some of what's in the statement of interest, some of the facts and figures, just so people understand, these have a useful life that has been far exceeded. I believe the Little School is a little bit older than the Hood by two years, I think.
Two years, yeah.
Yeah, and so they're, they're both well beyond their useful life.
Talking like two thousand one, two thousand three type frames.
Yes, yeah, two thousand one, two thousand three. And for us to then, in some ways, just let the public know that this is out there, and, and it's something that's a possibility in the future that we need to explore. I don't anticipate having information from the visit on the twenty-sixth to share on the sixth. I don't think it's going to change much unless they come out there and say, "Absolutely not," and walk away, or something. But I don't think that's going to happen.
I don't think anybody that looks at those structures and has any sort of detailed
Yeah.
inspection will come up with that conclusion.
I agree. And, and also, even if they completely agree, they're not going to have, I do not anticipate enough feedback-
Correct.
-for that kind of a turnaround.
Yeah.
But I think we can update them on the process, as we've been doing at these meetings.
No, that, that makes sense. Any questions, anybody?
Yeah, so what is going to be present, town meeting has to vote on this, to approve it, to move forward with the project?
I think what's going to be presented is that they're going to pass over it, and they're going to ask leave of the meeting just to do a brief presentation, that's my understanding. We're going to review this Friday morning, I believe, but I, I think that's probably what would happen. So, it's more of a placeholder, we had to put on the warrant in case we did have something. And, and it's almost just to let the public know of what's, what's coming.
Yeah, there's nothing, since there's no budget, and there's no, there's no figure, there's nothing to really to- It's not going to be like a blanket approval of like, "Yeah, let's just do the project of however much it costs." That's not what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think it's a really good idea, though, like, get this out in front of the community, let them know this is what we're thinking, be able to foster that communication and understand, you know, people can see what, what's coming down the road, and why.
Yeah, and, and if there are any questions, that'll open up that as well, so I think that's good.
Yeah, what's, what's interesting is the Little School, you've got a situation where anyone who was in those buildings might know, but we haven't even been able to use them for the last couple of years, so now, there's two more cohorts of students that aren't even aware of the issues, because we're just not even there.
It, it, it's beyond that, it's actually a drag on resources, I mean, we still, there's still heating going on, there's still cooling, I mean, there's actually, it's not just that it's sitting there doing nothing, it's actually a drag on resource.
So, it, it, just to be clear on that, so the Little School's not being used at all anymore?
It's being used, not with students.
Not with students.
Yeah, it's being used for overflow storage, and we've opened up other spaces for them within the building.
Is, is the preschool all at the Hood School this year?
It's, it's not, but some of the- It's not, but some of the, um, that's, that is part of why we're able to do it. There's just what we were able to do to move preschool and to reallocate into classrooms. If we had to open another classroom at the little, all of a sudden we'd, we'd have an issue. So because, because of where the enrollment is right now, we're able to make it work. Last year we started there and we were able to make an adjustment, make it work and, uh, and, and reuse a different classroom for a different purpose, you know, move some other smaller, some smaller classrooms to other spaces.
And, and if I recall, years ago, the hood was able to be used as a tuition paying, um, class for, for a co, uh, cooperative, right? But we don't have the space for that right now, correct?
We're currently, it would be very difficult to do something like that right now, right, Michael?
Yes.
At the hood, we were, we were at capacity. Every, every space and every classroom is being used.
Right. Because, because again, that's the other thing to think about is we were actually getting tuition paid by cooperatives in the past when we had the space to use.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? Any other questions? Uh, I think we need to vote on this one. So can we get a motion to approve the warrant article thirteen as written?
So we, just to be clear, we, we're voting to recommend the warrant article, just this one? It's the only one that we?
It's the only one.
Okay.
Are we voting, wait, we're voting to recommend or are we voting to put it on the warrant?
Put it on.
It's on the warrant.
It's already on the warrant. Jeff had to give sort of preliminary approval because the select board already had to approve it just due to the timelines. They do want us to accept it and to, you know, approve it. And, and I think our, I don't know if our motion is to pass over. You know, I don't, I'm not sure what.
Well, it's, it, it's to put it, it's to approve what's here at, at town meeting, then it gets passed over.
Yeah, right, yeah. So you're approving the wording?
Correct.
Right. But then they want a recommendation, so we can either, either recommend to pass, in a separate motion, we can recommend to pass over.
Correct.
You could do a recommendation to be made at town meeting, maybe.
Go ahead.
No, I think you smart.
No, no, you, no, you go ahead.
You got this, Scott. You got this. Go ahead.
You guys are just making it longer.
Yep.
Well, again, so, so it's already on the warrant article? That's what I'm trying to understand. Like, it's on the warrant article already. But we're not making our actual recommendation right now? You want a motion to approve?
The wording.
The wording? Okay, I move to approve the wording of article thirteen for the October town meeting.
Because we're the sponsors.
Yeah, as a sponsor.
We're kind of going a little bit out of order.
Yeah.
But we want the official recommendation as the school committee. Jeff kind of got it where it needed to be before the select board vote.
Second.
Okay.
We have a motion, we have a second. Uh, do we have any, uh, discussion? Hearing none, uh, all approved, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, approve four zero.
So since we know we won't have the funding, do we just want to make our motion to pass, to, uh, pass over or wait till town meeting?
I think we wait.
I think we wait. Yeah. Um, okay, that, going on to routine matters. Um, minutes, doesn't look like we have any?
As though at this time, I do, I do have some for the next meeting.
That's fine.
Just didn't have them, uh, in time.
That's fine. Uh, any budget update? Doesn't look like any budget.
No, we'll have our first FY twenty-six one next, next meeting.
Excellent. Uh, but we do have a staffing update.
Sure. Very excited to share, um, some new hires at the Batch Elder School. Mia Borick is a paraprofessional, general full-day kindergarten. Heidi Roderick, long-term sub-paraprofessional in special education. Luanne Evans, paraprofessional, general full-day kindergarten. Rob Giordano, digital learning specialist. Again, these are, um, replacing some resignations, retirements. We were able to, um, have the paraprofessional we found, uh, with, with another position that was not filled. We were able to support a paraprofessional at the batch for a full-day kindergarten.
Great.
Which addresses what we heard from some of those folks last year. They were disproportionately affected by the cuts from two years ago, just given, um, the number of kindergarten sections and the number of staff that they had sharing. They were actually pulling their digital learning person to cover, and so we were able to alleviate, uh, some of that. At the hood school, um, we have, uh, Blaine Wiley is a long-term substitute for grade two. Um, at the little school, Rebecca Cagiano, paraprofessional. Francisco Moda, paraprofessional, special education. The middle school, Molly Corto is a building substitute. And we did have, uh, some folks who left the district as well at this time.
Excellent.
Now, Mr. Connolly, it, it, just, you had mentioned earlier, um, are all the building substitute positions filled to start the year?
Yes, I believe they are.
And just overall for substitutes, I mean, do you know the pool? I mean, I'm, I'm very glad coming out of COVID that we kept the building subs. I don't know if you're, I, I just think, in years past, it just seemed like there was always coverage issues. And so I think having those building subs has been a really good addition.
I agree.
It's also a, it's a, it's a minor league farm team for long-term subpositions. A lot of those building subs move into longer-term roles with us.
And, and just continuity of having the same people that know the building, know the students, know, know how everything works, got to be good. But just if, if we need beyond just the building subs, um, any idea how that is this year?
We've gotten to a point, starting last, last year, I'm just pulling off the list, um, where I feel like, we have a pretty good pool of reliable, um, daily subs that are not, um, they're permanent subs. Fill, fill rates have been pretty, pretty strong.
Good.
Not a hundred percent or any means every day, but it's pretty close to that, um, with the permanent subs there and some other building support. I, I haven't seen any issues so far. I think Morgan Suarez, the Human Resources Administration, did an exceptional job building, I think, a pool within the frontline automated system that, of daily subs.
Do, do most school districts do building subs still or not?
I'm not sure.
I'm just curious.
So we have, we have one, maybe one position open at the batch, but this potentially may have been filled, but a week ago.
Yeah, I was just curious if other districts did that still or not.
For, for building subs?
I think it's very common. Yeah, I think most, a lot of districts have done that.
Overall staffing, we have just a handful of, uh, positions. Again, those are all retirements, resignations.
Uh, excellent. So doesn't look like we have any bids and donations or grants at this time?
Not at this time. We'll have updates at the next meeting.
That's fine. And it looks like also no overnight trip requests.
Not at this time.
Wow, quick meeting. Uh, okay, social committee, uh, s- school committee, social media, almost reversed that one. Anything we want to talk about for social media?
Just a building update. Dr. Daley, maybe. That's all. Did we share out?
Yeah. Yeah, good opening of school.
Wait, are you talking about the warrant article?
Uh, no, I was saying, if, if you're going to find anything out from this meeting, I just think a quick update from.
Quick update, good opening.
Good opening, you know, sharing Dr. Daley's opening, like welcome letter or something like that.
Yeah.
Maybe like late bus registration coming soon or something.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Good.
Well, I also think that the town meeting isn't that far away, that we can start socializing this and letting people know this.
Yeah, that's fine. Nothing wrong with it.
Happening. Cause I think unless you're at the little or the hood, you don't necessarily are aware of it.
No, that's fine.
And just to say too, part, part of it is we want to get out, but part of it is it's not, there's no number to be voted on.
Correct. Um.
Investigating.
Information.
We're investigating.
Exactly. Uh, okay, um, moving on, subcommittee updates. A fire station committee update. Mr. Buckley?
Yes, we have facility master plan, where we accept the facility master's plan and to be put to the select board. And then fire station committee meeting was just looking at a site, possible sites for a second fire station. And so a few different sites were identified. Um, a number of people did a lot of work, you know, vetting those sites and, the only update from there.
Oh, that's fine.
Talking about different sites, so.
No, no, that's great.
Any other meetings since our last meeting? I didn't, I didn't see any in the calendar.
I don't think so.
Uh, yeah, I don't think, nothing I'm aware of. So the subcommittee schedule, um, we've got a finance planning, finance planning meeting, uh, this Friday, athletic subcommittee also this Friday, uh, fine arts subcommittee on September. Uh, so that's tomorrow, actually.
I don't have that on my calendar.
Yeah, that's, that is, I will update that. That is our small group one, so.
That's fine.
Okay.
And, uh, substance, substance abuse, fire station and facilities master plan are all TBD. Although one of them's TBD at eleven AM, which is pretty interesting.
Does anyone have a date for those that I could fill in?
I don't, but I'll, I'll get the substance abuse one.
I think fire station is not, I don't think we set one yet because we were waiting for information and, facilities master plan might just about be done. I think that committee has almost run its course, but.
And then do we have a policy, we don't, do we have a policy one coming out?
We have not set.
You've not set it yet, no.
Anyone wants to set dates, let me know.
Um, okay, uh, so the administrative reports, we want to cover that?
Sure. Share a couple of items here. Um, the Boston, uh, Globe ranked North Reading High School number thirty-five, the top public high schools in the greater Boston area for twenty twenty-five. Just shared out what this is, is a chart that ranks public high schools or towns within, partially within I four ninety-five. They look at the data from schools and in addition to, um, you know, test scores, they also focused on such criteria as percentage of students participating in arts courses, percentage of students completing at least one digital literacy or computer science course, and percentage of eleventh and twelfth grade students completing once, one advanced course. So these are all areas that we are looking at and looking to improve. So as always, we look at these rankings, um, and, and take with great pride that we're ranked where we are. We don't want to overreact, we don't want to underreact, but we're, we're happy with, um, out of a hundred and fifty schools that were looked at, high schools, are number thirty-five, so.
That's great.
Thought that was worth sharing out. And I did share that with the, the principal and vice principal, and they're very excited and shared that with their staff as well, so.
And wasn't, wasn't there also a ranking about the sports in the schools, like number eleven in the state?
Number eleven in the state.
Number four for public schools in the state?
Yeah, it was a pretty, pretty impressive number.
Right.
Excellent. I thought I shared that before, maybe I didn't, so I can, I can.
I don't remember.
Yep.
And maybe that's where I heard it from you.
Yeah, we were number, ranked number eleven. And then the other item is just that our, I've mentioned before, just wanted to give an update on our website. Um, we are launching a new website around October first. This will have enhanced communication opportunities, ease of use for administrators and staff who are posting. There are school committee pages. I am, um, I'm updating that and I, I'll work with Jeff, I guess, to just get your two cents on some of the style changes.
Fine.
I'm condensing a little bit. Some of the COVID warnings, I'm dropping down and trying to condense a few other areas.
I'll send it to my UX team, don't worry.
Yeah, we can put social media specifically there and, and have that there just as another way to look and to subscribe. But I think people will appreciate the modern look, um, to it and just the ease of getting information. So we're excited about it.
Maybe I recommend Mr. Chair that we get a modern picture to put on the school committee page.
Yep, that's fine. Uh, so we were going to talk about that anyway. Uh, why don't we plan on maybe next time?
Tell Noel while we make sure.
I'll bring a camera.
I think a style, I think, in the chair anyway, so.
That's great timing, right? We can replace, uh, the school committee page with the current school committee.
Am I the only one that's actually in it?
You may be.
We might go to a different room with better lighting, though.
The good old days.
The good old days.
That's all I had for the supplemental.
Excellent.
I, I will add that one thing that I, I've worked on with my team is to, um, open this up a little bit and try, so I'm going to try for the twenty-ninth and then moving forward with, um, some updates from each school. As, you know, you may not have something from every building, every meeting, but, um, this report may also include some, you know, I report when it comes to my attention, but sometimes the principals might have something quick to share. So you might see a little bit more from each of the five schools at every one of these meetings.
Perfect. That'd be great. Um, correspondence, doesn't look like we have any.
Not at this time.
Uh, all right, on to future business. Uh, we've got a meeting on September twenty-ninth, as was just a reference, where we will be going through and, uh, finalizing the school committee goals, uh, and action plan. The October sixth town meeting, October twenty-seventh, uh, we're going to be going through the elementary, school improvement plan presentation, as well as, uh, our first swing at the FY twenty-six budget, uh, for this fall. And, uh, uh, we will also be going through just our normal business, um, but, uh, obviously some big stuff. And the tenth, November tenth, we will have yet another meeting that will be the secondary school improvement plan presentation, as well as capital improvement, uh, and MCAS and accountability, always a fun one. Well, that's going to be a long one.
We don't have all of the, um, the updates at the moment, so right now that's the timeline for the MCAS and accountability. And we're also working on our response for the competency determination. Um, so there may be some updates on that as well.
Is it me or is that later than we normally do, MCAS?
That's what we've done the last few years.
Is that typical?
Yeah, there's been, uh,
That's fine.
The state release has been a little bit later.
That's fine.
Go the absolute first meeting, but.
No, no, that's fine. Um, okay, that's the future business. We are going to, uh, uh, close down the public session and actually go over into, uh, an executive session. From there, we will end up closing the meeting. So could I get a motion to, uh, to, is it adjourned to, uh? It's, yeah, we need a motion, but it would be a motion to, uh.
Adjourn to executive session and not return to public session.
Yeah.
Open session.
What do you say?
Go ahead, now you go.
You're the lawyer.
I'm the lawyer. Wow.
I move to, uh, adjourn the public session, go to, uh, uh, enter executive session with the purpose of adjourning. At the end of that, but the executive session's purpose is to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body.
Well, Red.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Uh, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all that approve.
Roll call vote.
Oh, yeah. Get a real roll call vote. Uh, Jennifer?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, uh, four zero. All right, thanks.